I'm going to call the meeting to order. I appreciate everyone being here for the Board of Trustees meeting, September 27, 2003. I will note that this is my first time chairing a meeting, so I apologize in advance for the comedy of errors that I am likely to make today. I trust my colleagues will help keep me in line, and people have done plenty of chairing of meetings before.
As needed.
I want to thank Mr. Walter from Hanover County, the board's attorney, for coming out to Goochlin today. To kick it off, do we have any amendments to our agenda? It should be on the second page.
I got it, I got it. If you would not discuss your proposals, you should add those. And you could add those as well.
Talking about this one?
The vials and the vials since.
The vials are already on here, correct?
Yes.
They are, yeah.
And then we've got the electronic meetings is already on here.
As a discussion item?
Correct.
Okay.
I think we're going to table this one. So I think we're good with the agenda as is. We do need to remove the minutes from new business because they're not done.
Do you need a motion to remove this?
Yes, ma'am, please.
I make a motion that we remove the approval of the August 2023 board meeting minutes.
A second.
We have a motion and a second to remove the approval of the August minutes because the minutes have not yet been completed. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the motion passes, so we will take that out. Anything else? Okay, we will move into citizens' time. We have a lot of cards up here. I'm going to pull them at random, not in order in any way, shape, or form. We give three minutes per speaker. We'll let you know when you're getting close. Tom will give you a 30-second heads-up. We typically allot 30 minutes total. We're going to just go through all the speakers. I want everyone to have a chance to speak that showed up, so if we go past 30 minutes, we go past 30 minutes. Everybody good with that? Ms. Sloan, you had mentioned you wanted to make a comment before we start, so have at it.
Good morning. It has come to the attention of several board members that certain members of the public are concerned that this board is in the business of banning books. Not only is this false, but it has never been discussed as a part of official board business. The rumors circulating that this board has any intent to remove books from any Palmonki Regional Library is completely untrue. Accusations of titanic-like activities by this board have been overheard and are absurd, and is a misguided attempt to rally forces to support an agenda of which the board has no participation whatsoever. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Our first speaker is, I think it says George Krass, Crufts, Krass?
Yes, thank you.
Yes, sir.
I have a few requests for the members of the board. I was a librarian for 41 years at the University of Virginia. A large part of what I did was material selection and book buying. I'm also a parent. I have a daughter and I have grandchildren, 12-years-old and 13-years-old. I am a member of the Friends of the Goochlin Library. I'm actually the vice president. I also volunteer, I have volunteered and do volunteer in a public school, an elementary school, for more than 30 years. So those are my contributions. My first request is to not restrict the rights of the individual parent to decide what their children shall read or not read. Any viewpoint that says there are some things that no children should read that contradicts the principle that I just put forward. Respect my right to choose for my children. I will respect your right to choose for your children. But don't you start telling me what I can let my children read and not read because I know them better than you. I want to talk about labeling. There has been some discussion of that in the past anyway. Labeling is too cryptic. It is so open to misrepresentation or misinformation. The Diary of Anne Frank. How can you express briefly in a label that there is one passage in that whole book where Anne Frank sort of thinks about sexuality and makes a few comments to her diary? That's it? You can't put that in a few words. Just saying sexual content, that's not going to be justice. And then the final point. If there is labeling, who's going to do the labeling? This is a lot of work. Do not underestimate. Do you know how many books come out in a year? Tens of thousands. To compare it with the movie industry is, it doesn't compute. So who's going to deal with all these books?
Thank you for your time, sir. Next speaker is Sharon Landrum.
Good morning. I would like to recap some concerns to the board that I've previously addressed. In the last several months, numerous localities have enacted positive changes regarding libraries, something I hope this board will also emulate. So I'm asking, number one, please revoke membership with the American Library Association. Last month, the Texas State Library and Archives Commission decided to cut ties with the ALA over its radicalism. Several states, including Idaho, Mississippi, Montana, and Wyoming, have voiced opposition to the concerning Marxist influence leading the ALA. And this month, Citrus County, Florida opted not to renew financial support for the ALA due to the organization's far-left stances. The ALA has been under fire for the past several years due to its efforts to bow to woke ideologies, including drag queen story hours, tips on how to sneak LGBT materials to kids without parental knowledge, and publicly endorsing and participating in initiatives to promote LGBT books in school libraries. The ALA undermines parental rights by fighting to have pornographic books on library shelves, arguing that no one has the right to make rules restricting what other people use. My second request, please change the policies to place sexually explicit material for minors in a sequestered area of the library and discontinue purchasing this material. A friend of mine informed me that she and her daughter-in-law will no longer support PRL. When this young mother was searching for board books at the King William Ranch for her 18-month-old, she ran across a board book entitled, Being You: A First Conversation About Gender. Here's a quote, "Some babies grow into a different gender than the one that grown-ups called them. There are lots of different genders that people grow into. Some people are girls, some people are boys, some people are neither, some people are both. What are some genders you know about?" This is a board book, designed for ages one to three. This is madness. PRL must be responsive to the many patrons that have made public comments over these issues in the past.
30 seconds.
You are accountable for the direction of PRL, so we look to you for positive change. Please protect the children of these participating parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Strasler. Please correct me when you come up. Thank you.
Everybody gets Stroger like Croger. I live in Boilville, thanks for having me. I'm here in support of the Palmonki Regional Library, the way it is, open access to book and materials. I just want to mention that Ezra Klein had a great interview on his podcast about the ALA and the president of it. It kind of discounts a lot of what people are saying about it. Anyway, a free and open public library is necessary in a civil society. An educated, well-read society is a protection against fascism totalitarianism, and of course ignorance. We see what's happening. We're here to protect an invaluable public resource. There doesn't appear to be much we, the public, can do if you, the Palmonki Board, vote to fire the director, withdraw from the ALA, pick and choose which books which citizens have access to, and label books. But we won't take it lying down. We will keep fighting for our public libraries, for the people who need them, for the people who love them, for kids, for those without internet, for those who haven't yet discovered the joys of reading, and for all of us who have. Those who challenge books aren't necessarily afraid of books. They're afraid of ideas. They're afraid of free thinkers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Kristin Holtie.
My name is Kristin Holtie, Code Harbor District in Mechanicsville. I am transparent, truthful, and honest about issues. I have spoken at the Hanover County School Board meetings the last two years, the Hanover County Board of Supervisors meetings three months, and here at the PRL meetings going on twice. I would like to address the banning of books that I hear brought up continually by those who are for minors being exposed to sexually explicit materials, that is pornography. Let's start with the phrase "book bans." What these people are referring to is not the banning of books. Books, films, and music visually any kind are freely available to anyone who wants them, and as hardcore pornography of the vilest sort, for that matter. What they are referring to is the public library curating what does and does not go into libraries, and which books they deem appropriate for their constituency. Libraries and reading lists are curated. They always have been. This is not a ban. If the kids or their parents want to get their hands on these books, it would be an incredibly easy thing to do. To mischaracterize parents, suspicated censors for not wanting their children to be provided pornographic material is dishonest and disgusting. Those who bring up book banning use it as a trigger, when in fact, many of them are big fans of censorship. Look at the Dr. Seuss books, and Huckleberry Finn, several years ago. When they talk about their fictitious book bans, for example, they are not talking about campaigns to have books critical of gender ideology by intellectuals such as Brian T. Anderson and Abigail Schreier, removed from libraries and from Amazon. They are not talking about the book burning of heterodox literature in Quebec, or the massive purchase of books that do not serve diversity, inclusion, and equity in the PO region public schools that removed all books published before 2008. But most of them would have a problem having books that contradicted LGBT ideology, removed or even banned for that matter. I do not trust all librarians. For it was during the pandemic, it seemed like, that these books were slipped into libraries. I believe that these books want to indoctrinate, promote sexuality,
30 seconds.
and really want to turn children away from their parents and confuse the children, to be honest. I mean, if a child is born a girl, let them learn what, you know, as they grow older, what they want to be, not when they're five-years-old and read a book that says, "Well, you don't have to be the gender you were born." I just believe books need to be moved, certain books need to be moved to another area, not in the children's section, in an adult area.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Cleo Remmer.
Well, my request, I'm Cleo Remmer, I'm from Mechanicsville, Virginia. My request is quite short. I would like to request if you would consider moving these meetings to a time that is after 5 o'clock, so more citizens can perhaps attend. It is very difficult to get away from our 8 to 5 jobs a lot of times, and if that is not an option, then at least a compromise where half of them would be during the daytime and half of them be after 5. Thank you.
Thank you. Harriet Mader. Please, correct me again if I'm... Close enough, thank you.
Good morning. My name is Harriet Mader, and I was an English teacher for 37 years, which means I like books and kids. I also served on the board of the Friends of the Goochlin Library, and I'm here to speak about what a wonderful library the Goochlin Branch Library is. It offers so many programs for children and for adults, spaces for gathering, computers, and most of all, access to books. The freedom to access books is crucial to our community, our country, and our personal growth. Limiting access for books to books for yourself or your children is easy. Don't check it out. If you check it out and you start to read it and don't like it, close the book. Take it away from your child. But don't take it away from mine. Limiting access to books for anyone other than yourself is an imposition of your will, your views, your politics, your religion on everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Dorothy Wassenberg.
I'm Dorothy Wassenberg from King William County. I've spoken before. I'm going to beat a dead horse here. I don't think that we should restrict the rights, or parents should restrict the rights, for what their children read. I think the children should be able to read anything. I just think we need to restrict what the children have access to. And that includes Sex is a Funny Word is not a good book to have in the library for any child to check out. I'm not talking about something like The Diary of Anne Frank. That's a very good book with one sentence in it. Sex is a funny word was a book that did nothing but go into great detail to explain the sexual parts of a body, right down to describing what they were. And I've shown pictures of them at one of the other meetings in King William County. This is totally unfair for our children to have this kind of exposure in any way, shape, or form. I don't care how everybody feels. I think we should pull out of PRL just because they're not doing what we have requested. Put these books in a separate area. That's where they belong. And they're not out there for 5- to 8-year-olds to find out that they have a clitoris or a penis. I think that's wrong, period. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Mock.
I'm from Mannakin-Sabbath. My name is Doug Mock. I taught biology at the University of Oklahoma for 35 years. I haven't taught small children, haven't dealt with small children, but the whole idea of education is to expose people to new material, new ideas, new possibilities, and to the fact that there are people who disagree with you. That's the very essence of American freedom. Freedom of thought underlies freedom of speech, underlies freedom of everything else. So there's nothing more important than maintaining access to ideas with which you disagree. If you go to a university like the University of Oklahoma and you learn things that are not what you were raised to believe, you may have to struggle with that. You may have some conflicts. That's a good thing. That's called education. And doing things that restrict or try to attach stigmas to people who check books out from that shelf or people who go to that source for materials and making those decisions for everybody is the antithesis of education, the antithesis of freedom of thought.
Thank you. Mary Crook.
Hi, I apologize, I'm reading for my phone. Good morning, my name is Mary Crook. I'm in Goochlin, I live in Goochlin County, and I have two kids in Goochlin Schools. I've worked in the book industry for over 10 years, and I'm the owner of a local publisher. I think it's vital that I speak out today against the dangers of restricting access to books. I didn't say banning, I said restricting access. We are lucky to have a library director who has ensured free and fair access to library materials for over 14 years. The residents of Goochlin use, love, and need the library, its full funding and full open access to its resources, period. I know that those who want to restrict books are trying to do good. I know you worry about your kids, I do too. But the way you're doing it is wrong logically, morally, and legally. Logically, it's wrong because most of the books you want to restrict for being obscene or pornographic are neither. By the very definition, you cannot label something as obscene or pornographic without evaluating the entire work and the overall purpose. You're relying on a page or two of a book, or what someone else said, and because of that, you're falling easily into being completely wrong about it. But you'd know that if you listen to librarians. Librarians rely on years of coursework, thousands of books read, hours of lectures and homework and data to know what belongs in a library, to be so good at library science and structure that they can protect it against politics or personal biases. And yet, people here today think that their opinion of a book should matter more. I can't imagine having that kind of ego. Legally and morally, restricting the rights of others for any reason, but especially for your own comfort, is un-American and wrong. The First Amendment protects a citizen's rights to read freely, so restricting access to books at public libraries is breaking the First Amendment. You can't restrict everyone's access to a book because you don't want your child to see it. That's not how a library works. This has been true of all libraries from the beginning, and that has not changed. But after 300 years, you want to change that. So this is your legacy. This is what your grandchildren and great-grandchildren will know about you for generations. When they study the rise of book restrictions in 2023 and its negative effects on the communities you serve, they'll see your name and your vote captured forever in its documents on video. You are part of that history now. Do you want to be remembered for trampling First Amendment rights? Because you will be. You are not, as you keep trying to tell yourselves, just protecting children. You are forcing your own beliefs on other people. You're restricting the rights of other parents and children. And, sorry, I'm shaking. In these rural counties where bookstores are non-existent and thousands of people live without internet access, including myself, libraries are vital. By restricting book access, you're not just cutting off a path to literacy and resources, you are cutting off the only path for many residents. Do not restrict access to books in Palmonki Regional Library system. Do not leave the Palmonki Regional Library system. These counties will fall behind if you cut off their ability to learn and grow and succeed. Your legacy will be that you took away a community's First Amendment rights and made it ignorant, apathetic, and destitute. Thank you.
Thank you. Eileen Ford.
Eileen Ford, I'm a Goochlin County resident, user of this library, and thank you for this time to share my thoughts with the board and the direction going forward for PRL. As an educator for 31 years, a trustee of PRL for eight years until 2020, and a staff member of the Goochlin Branch after my retirement from education, I feel exceptionally familiar with the regional library system and with the decisions about the materials in a public library. Which brings me to my first point. PRL branches are public libraries operated by librarians and library paraprofessionals. More importantly, public libraries are by definition to provide materials accessible by the general public. As a board member, I was well aware that my role was not to decide on the hiring, evaluation, or maintaining of the trained staff, nor, though I am professionally qualified, was my role to select materials. Because public libraries are crucial to the education of U.S. citizens, one trustee role must be to protect our public libraries from government or personal censorship. We need to be attentive to community standards, but we also have to acknowledge that our communities have wide ranges in thoughts and beliefs. Some voices are so loud that they overpower other quiet, hard-working citizens who may hold vastly different views but are concerned about expressing them aloud. This is why the board has to be a protector of our libraries and the guardian of access for all citizens. My second point is that it has always been the policy of the PRL system for parents to decide on the materials that their children check out from the library, just as parents are responsible for what they watch on TV or computer use. It is the parent's responsibility to know what their children are doing, but it is not one parent's role or responsibility to determine what materials another parent's child can read or use. Consensus of this is important, or one group of parents or individuals will be trying to control what other groups want to read or need to read. So in summary, maintaining the integrity and freedom of the library is a civic duty and crucial role for the Board of Trustees. As guardians of the First Amendment to the Constitution, trustees need to defend against censorship, whether it comes from the government or from individuals. Finally, we need to respect all parents as the primary responsible agents in what library materials their children check out. One parent's views should not negate those of another parent. Thank you again for hearing of my concerns, as well as those of many others.
Thank you. Peggy Lavender.
Hello, my name is Peggy Lavender. I live in Mechanicsville, Virginia. Most of you know me, but for those who don't, I'm a parent and a volunteer at the school division, and I have been on the board of the Friends of the Mechanicsville Library since 2005. I am a lifelong book lover. I've worked in bookstores, I've volunteered at schools for literacy programs primarily. And I'm just here to say thank you to the library staff, the administration. They have been under a great amount of stress and been the target of some very ugly public comment, social media comment. And I have also too. I appreciate the board's statement about not banning books, although I find it a little personally disrespectful that we are to believe that removing books is not the goal of some of these people. It's very clear, if you pay attention to the news, references to other states such as Texas, who've removed entire libraries from their schools to make them into discipline centers. We can see the writing on the wall, those of us that support the Palmonki Regional Library and have done so for decades for the great work they've done in our community, that just in the last two years, this hostility, the aggression, the ugliness that has come up in our community is not rooted in a level of libraries. It's not rooted in the belief of the mission of public libraries. And we see that. It's clear. So I want to let you all know that that's why we're here, speaking, because we see where this is going. I would also like to say I'm happy to be at the Goochlin Branch. I've never been to this particular branch, and I was excited to come today. And I do want these meetings, it was suggested that some people be able to attend remotely, and I think that's wrong, that it should be expected for our Board of Trustees to appear in person at our libraries for the monthly meetings. If you can't come once a month to a meeting about the library, if you can't make it to a library once a month, I believe you might be in the wrong position. So thank you very much, PRL. Keep doing what you're doing. There's a lot of people that support you. Thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Comerford. Please correct me on that one.
Yes, my name is Carolyn Comerford. I'm a resident of Plutron, and I support the Palmonki library system as it exists with access to books throughout the system. This is unlimited access. I grew up in a household in which my mother was well-educated and well-versed, and her idea was that if a book offends you, you close it. If you do not want to read a book, you do not have to read a book. If you do not want to watch a television show or a movie, that is also an option. And the same, but you don't choose for other people. And I think we need access to books so that people can make their own decisions about them. their lives, and sexuality is a part of that life, and we should expect you to show up in books every once in a while. Thank you.
Thank you. The last card I have is Richard Greed.
A request to decline speak today.
Okay. That was the last one I had. Before we move on, anyone else that's here that didn't fill out a card that wants a chance to speak? Say no. Okay, thank you. We will move on to our consent agenda. Tom, it's you, right?
Sure. This month, the only two items on the consent agenda are the August warrants and the August board financial report. It's been available on the library website. They're in trustees' packets.
Tom, I have a question about the warrants. The rent this month for the headquarters office, I see it's double what it normally is. Could you explain to me, is that a two-month rent for some reason, or?
It's combining payments into a single check.
Okay. So are we paying it by, like, every two months now, or?
Probably a timing issue on when the rent payment was entered.
Okay, I just noticed it was higher than it normally is. Thank you.
Yep.
Tom, I also have a question about Hoopla and Overdrive. And for Overdrive, I see four payments totaling approximately $43,000, and Hoopla is $57,234. Could you explain briefly how they charge and how often we are charged? It just looks like, I don't know, is Hoopla once a month that amount approximately, or is Overdrive, it looks like it's almost every week? Just how they're charged and just explain that, please.
So Hoopla and Overdrive are electronic materials products. They're very different in their business model. Hoopla charges on a usage basis. They provide access to literally hundreds of thousands of different titles. And when a citizen uses their library card to borrow something, we pay for that usage. It varies depending on what the material is and how it was licensed and several factors.
Approximately how much?
It averages, sorry, approximately how much does it cost?
Yeah, approximately what would be, when somebody checks out a Hoopla book, what does it cost the library, approximately?
The average cost is a little over $2.
Okay. That's for Hoopla.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
So the Hoopla bill is paying for more than a month's period of usage. That is not a single month.
Okay. So do you know how many months that is?
I do not, without going back to see. The financial system combines invoices into single payments.
But not for Overdrive?
It can do that for them too, but there are multiple payment periods throughout the month.
Okay. And is Overdrive on a usage policy as well, like per-use?
Overdrive is not. Overdrive, we end up paying a platform fee, which includes some content credit, and then we have to pay for the titles on a per-title basis, which varies if it's an ebook, like, that you would read off of the screen versus it being an audiobook that you might listen to from your phone.
So Overdrive is platform. Hoopla is usage, per-use.
The fees here are going to be likely materials that are purchased. The platform fee is billed to us annually.
Okay, okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Anybody else?
I have one more question. There's a bill for the Library of Virginia which is contractual. Could you just explain what that contract is with the Library of Virginia?
I can. For a number of years, Library of Virginia has coordinated sort of statewide purchase to a consultant to help public libraries apply for the federal E-Rate program. They pass those costs back on to the libraries that are participating on a percentage basis, and that is our percentage basis. The consultants are part of a national firm. They're much more highly experienced than we would be able to provide with staff. It's been a very good value.
Okay. And is that talking about, like, vendors? Are we talking about discounts with vendors, or what kind of?
So, right. That's a little bit longer topic. I'm happy to address it, but E-Rate for public schools and public libraries is a federal program designed to help ensure schools and libraries have access to network connections. And if you, for those of you in the audience, when you go home, if you look on your phone bill, you will see that you're billed from your phone company for something called Universal Services. That's the umbrella organization that oversees these programs. And the program has a lot of, like, a lot of filing dates, a lot of procedural deadlines. It varies in how is the best way to be able to maximize what we receive. And when I say that, when I started at the library, all the branches were being filed for individually. When we ended up going to using this consultant, the consultant was able to look at our data and made a determination that really we needed to file it as a group because part of the program is based on poverty rates in your area, but that reducing the poverty rate overall gave us a higher return in what money we received back. So that's one of the ways that, you know, they just have a lot of experience with that, but they're able to kind of guide and help keep everything on the right timeframe, documented appropriately, et cetera.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Any other questions or comments on the consent agenda? We need a motion to approve it.
I'm going to approve it, Mr. Chairman.
Have a motion?
With the question answered.
Do we have a second?
A second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Consent agenda is approved. We'll move to old business. The first item under old business is an update on King &amp; Queen. Tom, that's for you.
I've got a stack of paper today. I was able to communicate with Nasee, the county administrator in King &amp; Queen, to help get an update. She tells me that they have finalized their recruitment. It's called Director of Community Programming and Tourism. The person is supposed to start on October 9th, and they are looking to meet with the library in the weeks following that to start discussions about their transition to their branch. They are paying their requested share in terms of the billing, and she kind of does not have a whole lot more to be able to offer in details at this time.
Tom, is there requested share for keeping their branch open and for shared services?
I mean, it is the regular requested quarterly payment, which covers both of those. We had talked at the, I think that was at the June meeting, but that was also before the meeting schedule changed for this year, so, but they are paying as requested.
Paying through what point? Do they know what, excuse me, Mr. Chairman?
No, you guys go for it.
Paying for what point of this year? Do you know yet?
They're paying the first quarterly payment.
First quarterly payment, okay. I want you to.
But they do not know what their end date would be, which I think is part of your question.
All right. Thank you, Tom.
Just looking at the budget report, though, and please tell me if I'm missing something, but it says year-to-date, we've received nothing?
That's correct.
Okay, so what quarterly payment have they made? Did you just say?
Yeah, they have entered it in their system to pay us. We've not yet received it, but they're taking action to do so.
Okay, so we're going to get the first quarterly payment in the third quarter of this year. Are they going to meet their full budget by 12:31?
So when I'm referring to the first quarter, it's the first quarter of the fiscal year, which started July 1 and would be ending on September 30. So a first quarter and first quarter do fit together in the library's fiscal year.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry.
Just one clarification. Is director that they're looking to hire, this person would be in charge of their library system? Is that why we're waiting for them to?
So I'm trying to see what they said. Their, I mean, their position is Director of Community Programming and Tourism. It does not state that it is a library director, and their job ad, I believe, mentions the library. They're trying, I would say, a very different service model than what I'm familiar with in public libraries. So I guess I kind of feel like I can't answer that. They have not been able to provide a lot of detail about what their plans are, but I think they're looking to turn the building, the school building that currently houses the King &amp; Queen Library into a community center kind of operation.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments on King &amp; Queen? All right. Next on old business is an update on Montpelier.
So construction at the Montpelier Parks and Rec Community Center and library is continuing, moving right along. They are on schedule, as I understand it, to get it dried in late November, early December, which is good, and the project just continues to move ahead. We have had meetings about furnishings for the library portion. Parks and Rec has had meetings for their side of the facility as well, so.
Any questions or comments on Montpelier?
I haven't seen it, oh, excuse me, I haven't seen it either. So will it be a joint opener, or will it open a piece at a time? Or has that decision even been made?
Well, I guess I could probably best say it has not been made, but I think it is expected that the building will open jointly.
Jointly, okay. Just curious, because, I mean, you've got two different things going there. Thank you, Tom.
Moving on to.
Thank you. Thank you.
Moving on to West Point.
So West Point is a renovation, and it also is continuing to move forward. The town of West Point had gutted the facility previously, and their contractor has been working to fill it back in with the appropriate spaces for the library. For people who might be new to this idea, the town is actually renovating their former police station, which was located in a strip mall facility. So it's a pretty big redo of that facility. It is moving along. I believe that they have been working on finishing drywall this week and last week. We've made a number of trips to West Point for construction updates and to clarify various pieces of the project. One of the things that I have as a handout here and pass that out, there was some discussion, I believe, at the last meeting, about the library's previous pledge of support for the project.
Yes.
The town is kind of moving towards a monthly billing and the reimbursement for that. The county, King William County, had also pledged money to help fund this project. The library board had previously pledged up to $150,000 for this project, and so this is sort of a progress billing request from the town, and it seems reasonable to share that with you here in this update. That's a question that the board will need to address this fiscal year, and probably sooner would be better than later.
Yeah, so just for clarification, they're looking for monthly payments from PRL beginning when? Like now?
This is sort of progress billing through the end of August, August 31st, and the town has receipts for $167,134.84. The library's previous pledge represented 13.11% of the project cost, so the $21,911.38 is 13.11% of the cost to date on August 31st.
So does this require action from all?
It most definitely would require action. The part of the meeting later would be discussion about the reserve fund, I believe. The library has funds in reserve that have previously been designated to go to the project, but it would take action by the board here today to appropriate the money for us to be able to make a payment as, you know, as staff to the project.
Chair, any questions for me?
Yes, ma'am.
This 13.11% that we're accountable for, I just wonder if we'd be presented with an invoice? Do we have access to the receipts to quantify exactly what the expenditures are before we pay? Because as a business, I mean, a small business owner, I never pay without an invoice or access to proof of payment, you know, reimbursing a vendor and such. So I'm just wondering, do we have any kind of transparency so we know exactly what we're paying?
So the town of West Point is also a political subdivision of the Commonwealth. They have required auditing and, you know, financial processes, policies, et cetera. So, I mean, all of that has been entered into their financial system. I'm sure that if that is what the board requests, the town will provide that.
Yeah, I would like to request that.
But this is a summary of what has been.
I would like a full report of exactly what we're paying 13.11% of, just so we know, and we have access to receipts or proof of payment if, you know, if we ask for it, if they can supply it to us, that would be, I mean, I just think that's standard business procedure, that you know exactly what you're paying. So that would be my request. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, and Ms. I believe, if, as a kind of senior member here, that's been through a couple of these, this is something that we have used a reserve fund in the past. We certainly used it on the Atlee Lottery, and we actually used it on the, I was just here, but the modification was just being done as I first went on the library board in 19, for this library. There's a little expansion there on the back, and all those things were accounted for, I can assure you.
That's great. I just want to see it.
No, but, no, you asked a perfectly question, but I just want you to know in the past that is some of the things that we have taken out of our reserve fund to help the counties expand and provide library service.
I fully support that expansion and renovations.
I just didn't want you to think this is the first one we've ever done.
No, I'm just the one in the back room that likes, you know, seeing an invoice and receipts before I create them.
Sure, sure, absolutely.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
You make a motion now? If you have some. Ms. Sloan, would you like to make a motion based on what you said?
I would like to make the motion that we agree to appropriate these funds with the understanding that we have full accounting of the 13.11% that we are paying in terms of either receiving an invoice, a list, a report of payments made, just so we have full access to and knowledge of what. full access to and knowledge of what we're paying.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
This standard.
As clarification, is your motion only pertaining to the $21,911, or are we setting up a process to do this?
For the entire, for this particular one, but as a rule, the process that when we receive the progress billing, that it be accompanied with an invoice, a full explanation of exactly what we're paying. Just, that's just standard business procedure.
So you amended your motion to say that we agree to appropriate the funds requested by the West Point Town Government with an understanding that we will receive a list of payments made and invoices in order to have knowledge of what we are paying for this process going forward from this point on?
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah, and an invoice to us for the progressive billing with backup.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passed. Moving on to new business, the first item on new business is library association membership. Ms. Schumacher, I believe this was something you placed on the agenda.
Right, and I had a chance to ask my first question at the last board meeting before we decided to delay it to this meeting. So, Mr. Schublin, my question is still, if you can tell us what's been PRL's procedure up until this point for trustee members and library association memberships?
So, traditionally, PRL has paid for American Library Association and Public Library Association memberships for the trustees.
That's it? Okay, so historically, have all trustees been informed that memberships were being made in their names for them?
Yes.
Yes, because they've been provided with the information from the association.
And what information are you referring to?
Monthly magazine.
Magazine, yeah.
So they haven't been, they haven't been asked prior to being signed up?
They have not.
Okay. I would like to make a motion that PRL will not sign any trustees up for any organization or membership without their expressed permission from the individual trustees from this point forward.
We have a motion on the floor?
I second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion?
I guess what, um, I can tell you, I have, you know, been receiving it for quite a bit of time. I find it very useful. Not that I agree with everything you said, you know? Like a lot of the folks that have spoken here today, it tells us what's going on in libraries across the country. It gives us a lot of ideas of how to, of how to, everything from how to possibly even lay out libraries. It gives us a lot of information to our level, not, not, not to, not to be able to design libraries, but to understand the, the processes and how libraries are changing, and the, the products that are required to have an up-to-date library. And I have found that very useful. I usually try to read a couple of articles in each one I ever see. I'm just, I know there's could be things in there you don't agree with. There's things in there I don't agree with, quite frankly. I think you would find it useful. Don't, um, don't, don't be scared away from, um, social media, something.
And I, I think in my motion, I made it clear that if you as a trustee want to be a member, you can continue to be a member.
I understand that.
But that, I believe that individuals on this board should be asked if they want to be members. Okay.
I'm making, I'm making a pitch for a magazine that I think that overall you would find useful, or any, when I say, any board member would find useful.
Ms. Sloan?
And if you disagree with me, that's fine, people have disagreed with me over years.
Oh, no, I, I absolutely, no, I'm not, don't, that's not what I'm commenting about, I'm just saying that, that we have full access to the ALA via internet, should anybody wish to find anything that might be found as a result of being a member in their magazine or whatever other periodicals. I have not received anything yet. I didn't know I was, a membership was made in my name to either of these organizations. But should I desire to learn anything about them, full information is readily available at any time 24/7 on multiple platforms of social media and their website. And if somebody doesn't have internet access, they can certainly come to their library and educate themselves. So, I don't believe you need to be a member of the association to fully understand and learn what they're all about. So, thank you.
Okay. Any further discussion?
I would like to ask a question.
Go for it.
Certainly, the ALA is a well-known organization for understanding and receiving information about library systems. Are there other organizations that produce information that perhaps we should know about? And do they have the opportunity to join them, and would you support that?
So, the American Library Association is really the oldest and largest professional association of librarians for librarianship, for libraries that exists. There really are not other organizations. The Public Library Association, it's commonly referred to as PLA, is a large subunit of the American Library Association with a focus on public libraries. So, there are numerous state associations that are also affiliated with the American Library Association. But there really isn't a counterpart to it in the United States.
Any further discussion? Ms. Schumacher, before we vote, I just want to clarify, your motion is not simply just to inform new trustees that they are members of these associations? That's really the crux of what you're saying?
Correct.
Okay.
You want me to read my motion?
No, it's good, I just want to, I just wanted to make sure I understand exactly what, what we're voting for.
Yeah, we'll, we'll be informed, that, and the membership is being made in their individual name prior to doing so.
Thank you. All right, let's take a vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Take a, who takes the roll?
The Secretary.
Ms. Schumacher, can you take, take a roll call on this, please?
Yes. I had a paper for this, I just need to find it. Never mind. All right. Barb?
Sloan?
Yes.
Mr. Johnson?
Yes.
Did I do myself at the end?
Yes, do yourself at the end.
Mr. O'Connor?
No.
Mr. Martin?
Uh, yes.
Ms. Simkins?
No.
Ms. Shipman?
No.
And then Ms. Schumacher, yes.
So, the motion passes four to three. All right, moving on, review of the board bylaws. Our chairperson, who could not be here today, this was her item, so I will try to get through it as best I can, but please step in and help me along the way. I think the intent was to review the bylaws and look at some proposed changes. We're not voting on anything today. But the, the goal is to look, and you have some in your packet, you have some red edits throughout. I don't want to go through every little thing, because I think it will take entirely too long. These are things we could work through, perhaps outside of this meeting, but larger, larger items, I think that we wanted to discuss certainly are what our committees and the roles of our committees, as far as the executive committee, the personnel committee, and finance committee, to try to define those. I think that at least was one of the major goals of this. But if we start on the first page, I do have a question, and this might be a question for you, Mr. Walter. As far as the makeup of the board, the 10 members, the 4-2, 2-2, is making adjustments to that in the purview of this board, or is that an agreement made among, amongst the counties?
The number of...
Trustee rep...
Number of trustees and the allocation is part of the underlying agreement between the jurisdictions, and the library board cannot adjust it.
Okay, that's what I thought, I just wanted to clarify that.
That was one of my...
Okay.
We don't, we don't have jurisdiction...
Yeah, no, I just, yep, just want, thank you.
Good, good catch.
Any questions on page one, or things that we want to discuss on page one?
Oh, page one, okay, no.
Mr. Walter, could you just clarify, the plan is to have a new agreement by the next fiscal year, is that correct?
My understanding is that the jurisdictions are starting discussions about revising that, especially since King and Queen indicated that they would be leaving, so exactly how that ends up, I, I don't know, that's, that's not within my purview, but my understanding is those discussions are ongoing, and part of that would include the membership and the division among the jurisdictions determined numbers of members.
And that will be...
And with the timeline also for the next fiscal year, or...
That's my understanding, however, it could be before then the agreement is reached, or it could be that an agreement is to continue the current status going forward for a little bit longer if an agreement hasn't been reached, but my understanding is those discussions are ongoing.
Thank you.
If that could be reached after the fourth or fifth fiscal year.
All right, let's go to page two, discussion or questions on anything here? The main changes proposed are moving to make sure the bylaws state that we have non-regular meetings a year, which I know we have, what, 10, nine, 10? We already are doing. The bylaw currently states that we have a minimum of six. The proposed change is to change the bylaws to say that we have nine. Again, this is really for, to work through and have discussion, not necessarily, you know, we can work through this as a, as a board. Questions or comments on page two?
I have one, and again, this goes back to, to a time before a lot of y'all were here. You're, you're taking out B and say none, that the chairman or two members can't call any special meeting?
I don't think she's taking it out, she's saying no changes. So these are, this is the box, and these are the changes, so none is saying leave and be alone.
Okay.
Makes sense?
Makes sense, all right, because, because there were, we had a, for instance, it was some years ago, when we had a budget, and King and Queen informed us that we could beat the budget, we had to have a special meeting.
Sure.
Covid, Covid hit, we had to have a special meeting.
Right.
You know, these, these things come up, these things come up. Okay, I misunderstood.
Mr. Schublin, maybe you could give us a bit of history? I believe in the last changes that were made to the bylaws, that it was reduced down to six meetings as a minimum, is that correct? Before it was more...
I honestly don't recall, I kind of think that it has been six for a long time, just as a minimum number.
Okay.
It doesn't say that you cannot, you know, meet more frequently. We have had as many as 30 meetings in a year, when you include committee meetings, so...
So this is just a minimum of six? And is, are those only meetings where a quorum is present, or does a meeting count where there is not a quorum? Does that count towards the minimum meetings?
I would have to do some more research, but I think it would still be...
Normally for these, they are scheduled meetings, if for some reason the meeting cannot go forward, I think, since the library board is, interprets its own bylaws, I think if the intent is to have scheduled meetings.
Scheduled meetings.
If for some reason a hurricane came through and it made it, you know, unable to meet, I think that that would still satisfy the scheduled meeting requirement.
Okay, that, that's my concern with increasing the number of meetings, is that if should, something should come up and we can't, we would be out of, not out of commission, but we wouldn't be following our bylaws if we've increased it to such an amount that we can't actually fulfill it for some reason.
Correct. Okay.
Anything else on page two?
E, where we say all meetings will be governed by a rabbit rules of order, we should insert the word, word modified rabbit rules of order.
Could edit, I think, um...
Because, because that's what we work on.
Yeah, let's make sure we suggest that tomorrow.
Yeah.
Yep, yep, all right.
That's what we, that's what we work on.
Sure, moving to page three.
Can we stay at page two just for a second?
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to look at the order of business at the regular meetings.
Oh, cool.
There was a suggestion to remove the report of, to move the report of the library director up higher into our agenda. Maybe somebody could explain why it's one of the last items? Is there historical reason for that, or...
I think it's just, like, precedence, that's the way that it has been for...
On the bylaws?
Decades, I would say, at this point.
Yeah, it, it was like that before Tom got here.
So I, I have the feeling, though, sometimes it kind of gets lost at the end, and I feel like it's an important part of our meetings together. So I personally would like to see it moved up higher onto the agenda rather than the last thing. And then, I know we kind of do this already, but I wonder if we shouldn't have a standing item for reports of committees, if there are any committee reports, now that we're looking at having three committees, a personnel committee, a finance committee, and the executive committee, if it wouldn't make sense to have a standing item for committee reports?
Thoughts?
I think that's essential.
I think it, I think that the committee reporting will work either way. I mean, if you have a standing item on the agenda, that's fine. But when committees are meeting, they, they will report kind of as a natural part of the process, so it doesn't, it won't, it won't hurt anything.
And do you have any...
But they're still, they're still undescribed.
That's what we want to work on today.
We've got to get to that.
We need them, we need them described before we can give them a spot on the agenda.
Any objection to moving your report up?
That's on page two.
Specifically, would it be five?
Ms. Schumacher, do you have a specific place you envision the library director's report to get? I do agree that I think it's important, and I hate that sometimes we, we get, and may get lost in the shuffle.
I would, I would suggest that it be placed before old business.
So between consent agenda and old business, goodbye. Okay, that's something I think...
And I mean, some of those things you talked with us today, Tom, about King and Queen update, Montpelier update, West Point update, those are actually part of the library director report, right? So...
Yes, and I think that's why it tends to not necessarily get covered, repeating myself at the end of the meeting that way.
Okay. All right, let's move on, page three, I think the proposed change is to add... Page three, I think the proposed change is to add, as officers of the board, to change from the treasurer and add the chair of the finance committee. That's what's proposed here. Any discussion around that? Yes, ma'am.
So, for a finance chairman, would that be the chairman of the finance committee?
I believe that's what was intended by this edit. I did not specifically talk to Barb about that, so, does anybody else know? I don't know if anybody else had a conversation with her. I would think, my assumption would be that it has to be.
Yeah, the finance chairman would head up the finance committee and work hand in hand with the library director, and then report the finances in a more detailed report, but work directly with the finance, I mean, with the library director about all finances, because the board is responsible for the library funds. So I think that we need somebody that's on point and has access to all the financial information, and can report fully, not only to the finance committee, but to the board, a full report every month, just so we know what's going on, I mean, a balance sheet, full understanding of what's going on with all the funds. It's our responsibility. And I think that there's a person that's working directly with the director that makes that, that facilitates that in a much more efficient way.
I don't know whether this is a question for Mr. Walter, but can we keep the wordage of having a treasurer on the board and reword that to being the finance committee chairperson from the board, rather than the library director?
It certainly is possible in the bylaws. I would point out one thing, this is, this may be partly practical more than legal, and that is, because there's no language in here regarding committee membership, it is possible that the person who is the finance chair could also be either the chair of the library board or the vice chair. So to have, to say that the treasurer is someone who might also be another officer, that's a possibility, unless the intent is that the chair and vice chair of the board aren't eligible to serve as chair of the finance committee. Given that you only have 10 members and you're complicating three committees, dividing those out sometimes becomes a challenge, and certainly it can happen, I would just say that that may be a practical issue, especially if the chair or vice chair happens to have some particular experience or expertise in finance. That person, the board might want that person to be the chair. We don't want to have one person serving two roles on this, in the way that it's currently set up, you do not have one person serving in two positions. So it's not something that is precluded, but as you go forward making final decisions on this, the treasurer could in fact be the chair of the finance committee. But just keep that in mind when appointments are made and responsibilities are made.
Ronan, can I add something else?
Yes, ma'am.
On the finance chairperson, that would also, there's a big difference between governmental accounting, with handed accounting, and a small business accounting. There's, there's a big difference with staying within governmental accounting compliance. Do we really feel comfortable with, I'm not sure, not sure how to put it out, do we feel comfortable with, I can only think of one person on the board so far that really has governmental accounting experience.
Right. Okay.
May?
Yes, ma'am.
About that?
This one.
Not really looking for government accounting experience, looking for transparency, because the public has a right to know what this body is approving for payment. And I think that if we have a point person on the board who's working with the library director to ensure full access of all expenditures, you don't have to be an accountant to do that, you just have to be working with somebody who is an accountant, who can make this material available to the public for full disclosure, because it's public funds, taxpayer dollars, and we should be accountable for it, to the public. And that is what I'm striving for in proposing, that we have a finance chairman as opposed to a treasurer. That kind of never made sense to me, because a treasurer is the person on the, on the body that does sign the checks or write the checks and is responsible for the funds. And that's not, we're not, this board is not in the business of running the library. That's the library director's business. This board is responsible for making sure that the public understands how their money is being spent, and that's all that I'm trying to, I'm trying to get at with this, in having a finance chair, working with the library director, not, not telling, or just, you know, printing the warrant reports and writing the checks. That's not our business. But informing the public is our business. That was the goal of the finance chairman and finance committee, once again, working directly with the library director.
I mean, the board always has the opportunity to, you know, request additional documentation or reports, as does the public. I mean, it doesn't really require a change in the bylaws for us to be able to provide you with some other additional detail. If the finance committee chairperson is going to have the role of, you know, signing invoices, et cetera, then I dare say that's going to be probably a different workload than most of the trustees would be expecting. But I'm not sure what information or what additional reports, you know, you'd like to see produced, but that's certainly open for discussion to meet your information.
I don't, I don't know whether Barbara was really saying that. Really, the finance chair, or if you call it the finance chair or the treasurer, is a person that sits on, from my experience, or even running a nonprofit, is, is to be viewed by the, whoever is supporting you, either the public or, in my case, I got a lot of grants from the government and other sources. But you want somebody there who you can see a bright line between who is watching and making sure that funding that's coming in is spent according to the purposes of that contribution, whether it's dues or any other aspect of what is coming into the organization. The, frequently, the treasurer is, has that role. It would not be the CEO of the organization. In my, in my organization, it was not. But again, it gave me a lot of credibility and opportunity of speaking out into the audience that supported me and could, and it just gave me comfort, really, that I was handling the resources that were coming in in a, in a proper way where they could see what was going on and report to them. Now, as Barbara's saying, you would like to have somebody on the staff that has the ability to access and provide all the information that's necessary for that individual, all right, to have that report whenever they need it, and as she was saying, work hand in glove with that individual. But I think it is important, and if you go up and look at discussions on the website about any treasurer or chief financier or officer, all right, then that, that's clearly stated, try your best to keep them separated. As the organization gets larger, it becomes even more important that it's separate. And we're over a $6 million organization now. That's a substantial amount of money the public is holding us accountable for. And as Barbara's saying, we need more information in a very explicit way that we can make those determinations very quickly. So I support her in what she's trying to do.
Well, I'd also like to point out, if I may, quickly, that I, in our bylaws, we do make, we do indicate that any two officers of the board are authorized to sign invoices and approval payments. And in item E here, I did say he, she, he or she is authorized to sign invoices for approval payment, meaning the finance director. In no way would, I think, certainly not me, or this board, expect that a member of this board is responsible to sign every invoice. That's the library director's job. However, we are responsible to understand and fully report what is being spent. It is not our business to run the day-to-day operations of the library. It's just, that's not our business.
And again, if I might share, I had the opportunity to sign any check that was below $5,000. Anything about that? Had to have two signatures, one of them from the board. Now, you can make that number, you can change that number if you want somebody to push that up to $10,000 or something like that. But again, that's, becomes a pretty large sum of money that's going through, and you would want a double signature on anything like that. And I thought $5,000 was okay. I never had any problem with that. I'd bring the checks to the board meeting, and they'd sign the checks.
So obviously, today, I don't know how many bills you pay with a check that you actually need a signature on. Probably not any, right? Like, everything's electronic?
Yeah, so, I mean, a number of years ago, the library board chose to put their-
Right, so we're not signing checks anymore.
Put their funds in, into basically what I would call the Hanover County Treasury.
Right.
And so, we're, we're subject to their procedures. No one from the library actually signs checks these days. The checks go out under the signature of the Hanover County Treasurer. There are payments, and you can see them on the list of warrants with an E by them for the check number, because they're, they're moving away from checks as well because of the cost. They're moving towards ACH payments. But there are multiple approvals of the expenditures along the way. So some of that, the, thank you. The very first one, to Lawrence, if you notice, the E at the end of the check number is the E that I'm referring to. But, and that's just a decision, you know, previously made, but-
Mr. Walter, are we required as a board to have a treasurer?
Yes.
Yes.
And the treasurer, under state code, is given custody of the funds of the regional library, and is supposed to be bonded unless the board waives that requirement.
How does the Hanover Board of Supervisors, for example, do that? Is there, is that the treasurer that's elected that's the, or?
The treasurer is by and large responsible for all county funds. The board supervisors budgets, and eventually appropriate amounts, there are policies that they have implemented, giving authority to the county administrator and through the county administrator, the department heads, including the director of finance, to make certain payments. There are certain payments that are required for full or approval, for those to actually be paid. But the treasurer actually is the one who holds those funds in a fiduciary capacity, and as such is responsible for what happens to those funds at the end of the day.
Any further discussion on page three? Like I said, I want to get to the committees. Page four, I think sort of covers what we're discussing now, as far as the funds. Any comments, questions, discussion on page four before we move on?
Well, Mr. Chair, just as we were sitting, at the present time, no one is physically signing checks. So I'm not sure how we are. I do have another question here, that's pretty simply. The board officers should serve two, two years. Of course, we serve four-year terms that would eliminate a person who is, in their last year, unable to, to-
Yep.
Hold an office.
Yep.
For example, myself.
Right. So, I mean-
Yeah, I'm not in favor of that change.
Yeah, okay, okay. I just thought, I was trying to think aloud last night, well, excuse me, not, not just last night. Last night was when I was reading it over one more time. And I think, wait a minute, now, that's cool, that could, that could complicate things. So that's something we need to chat about.
Yep, we'll just strike it. I think we'll just strike it.
Karen?
Yes, ma'am.
Quick comment. I think we had, we're using the wrong word, it's actually not signing checks, it's signing invoices for approval. So by signing, I guess we're using the word signing, we're not literally signing them, we are just being aware of invoicing and approving invoicing, and that would be the finance chairman with the library director, should something come up that needed to be approved.
Okay. Again, I'm, I'm going back to where Tom and I used to have to sign a check.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a check signing, because I think we all, you have a signed checks anymore, it's more invoice approval.
Okay. Okay. Thank you.
Page five is where we want to talk about our committees. Right now, the bylaws just state that we have an executive committee and a personnel committee, but it doesn't define what those are. I think that was one of the main purposes of taking a look at the bylaws. There is a personnel committee description down here. I do not see one for the executive committee.
On page seven, there is a description of the executive committee, and I believe this, a number of these items actually come from the May 2022 minutes that Mr. Shuppley pointed to me to for a definition of the executive committee. Not all of them, but I believe the first four, A through D, were things from those minutes from May 2022.
So we really need to hop to page seven to look at that. Any discussion?
I have a quick question.
Yes, ma'am.
I just want to confirm that, let's see, this, this points out the executive committee would be a five-member committee, it looks like. Yeah. So in an executive committee meeting, or a workshop with an executive committee and such, the entire board can be present, only the executive committee can vote, correct?
That's how it currently is. Yes, ma'am.
I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Actually, it's incorrect. This has been changed since the one that I cut and paste from the May 2022 minutes.
So what would be the, I guess if you could summarize what the, what the changes that are being proposed, based on how it's currently being done?
Well, I believe there was some discussion about this in the June meeting, about who should be part of that executive committee. I believe up to this point, it has been one representative from each of the jurisdictions. Please correct me if I'm incorrect. And it has not necessarily been any of the officers of the board. Is that correct, Mr. O'Connor? Sorry to put you on the spot.
I think that's how it was at that time.
You're right.
Now, is, Barbara, I know you have a Robert rules down there, is, I understand Robert rules. An executive committee is normally made up of the officers and the committee heads.
I'll cut the June minutes here.
Regardless, regardless of- Regardless, regardless of, see, this is where Robert's Rules doesn't, that's why I said to put modified, Robert's Rules doesn't fit government as easily as it fits, I'm just using example, and everyone will laugh. My mother had a garden club, and my aunt was part of the tour, and she knew Robert's Rules backwards and forwards, and she, as my mother said, your aunt just won't let us have a meeting. And she held them to Robert's Rules. So we need to, we need to, Kristi, excuse me, with what you're asking, I think is important that as long as we have, still have four jurisdictions, we need to consider that.
Mr. Shepley?
Ms. Schumacher, would you like me to read the A, B, and C from the May minutes?
Yes, please, thank you.
So, in May, I'm going to summarize and read some specifically, but in May of 2022, there was some discussion about eliminating the executive committee and reestablishing finance. At the end of the discussion, they decided to continue with executive committee for a second year. The, reading verbatim, "The changes to the executive committee will be as follows. A, the executive committee will handle preliminary information and decisions for both finance and operations." Those were two previous committees that the Board of Trustees had. "That information and decisions will then be brought to the full Board of Trustees at their regular meetings for final approval. The membership of the executive committee will consist of one member from each of the four PRL counties. The B O T chair will serve on the committee as the representative from his or her county. The committee will have a total, will have four total members. And it was determined that the executive committee will have four assigned meetings a year, and then additional meetings as needed." One of the things, as the library's director, that never really seems to have a lot of traction with the executive committee was really, what is the purpose of having the executive committee when the board is meeting 10 times a year? And generally, with the membership, there aren't things that each of the trustees feels a responsibility for knowing and understanding. And so I kind of asked that, you know, as staff, you know, what are we trying to do by having this committee? How is that intended to work to better serve you? That's been an ongoing question. And, I mean, I, for one, had supported the idea that we get away from it, because it did not seem to be working in fiscal year '22, and it didn't particularly work for the Board of Trustees in fiscal year '23.
May I just make a comment?
Yes, ma'am.
So with the executive committee, when it was initially informed, we had to do, like, a major benchmarking on salaries, and we did a lot of finance work. And then after that, then it just kind of lulled out because there wasn't anything else. So, the point was, it was supposed to be a joint operations and planning committee, but we didn't really have, didn't need for that. So that's why we're talking about-
It sounds like it was kind of formed, correct me if I'm wrong, kind of as an offset on the month that we, there weren't a regular meeting, and now that we're meeting as frequently as we are, there's probably, that's to your point of, it's kind of-
We were trying to pick it on on committees.
Yeah, okay.
And meetings.
Thank you.
Chair, may I-
Yes, ma'am.
I would echo Tom's comments. I had the very same thoughts and questions when I came on the board. Because when I started asking questions and getting informed about the executive committee, what I heard was that most often, all members attend the meetings anyway, and so that begs the question, why are we doing it? So maybe it could be more of a, what I'm hearing is, it sounds more like a workshop session, open to the public, but a non-voting workshop session with all members on board. I think rather than doubling the meetings, the amount of meetings for this executive committee, that seems to be a kind of amorphous, non-defined, perhaps unnecessary group, that we just get down to business as a board and have workshops instead of these executive committee, which is doubling the amount, you know, it's just like, here's, great, we're going to talk about, to talk about. Why not just do it all together? And it just, I completely agree with what Tom said.
Yeah, and as you know, I've mentioned to some of my other colleagues that I wasn't in favor of the executive committee. When I previously was board chair, we did not have an executive committee. We were having, and I will admit, we were having too many committee meetings.
Yeah.
We were having too many committee meetings. They kind of brought in the executive committee, I'm going to use the word "at hot" to focus some things, and they were able to get some of the things we were working on done very quickly, that. But you can see the executive committee really doesn't have any authority to make decisions as it should without coming back to the whole committee. It can make recommendations. I would think we would be better off as a, as to come up with additional committees as we need them. I do have one question on it. Executive committee, we were responsible for whistleblower policy, whistleblower policy as the policy is adopted. That's new to me, and I don't know what that-
That was one circulated, a draft. We're not, I think we decided we weren't going to bring that one up today. But that is in your emails, it should be.
I read it there, too.
Okay.
But it was on here, and I was, yeah, I saw that.
So I seem to-
Yeah, I read everything.
Mr. Chair, can I-
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I almost spoke to you in German in there. So it seems to me that the executive committee hasn't been working in the past. My question is, is there a chance to change the way that it has been operating and make it effective? For example, we are having this very long bylaws discussion right now. This could actually be something that could be handled by the executive committee, where they could make some recommendations. And obviously, like Mr. O'Connor said, none of those things would be approved until it would come before the full board. But some of this back and forth, and some of the discussions about, you know, what the roles could be and stuff like that, could be hashed out in a smaller group and then presented to the wider board. I understand that this executive committee was supposed to be a compilation of finance and planning, and I understand the planning committee was in charge of kind of the long-range goals and planning for the library. So where is that happening now, that long-range planning for the library on the board level?
At this point in time, I would say it needs to be happening at the full board level. I mean, and that is an important, you know, another important topic, so to speak. I mean, I think they are, they are all important. I think one of the things with that idea of a work session is that that could also sort of present you with a sort of quarterly milestone, as we're talking about priorities, an opportunity to, you know, to have discussion and make some progress on a priority with some focus, and, you know, and then come back to a different priority for updates at the next meeting. So I think that that seems a more appropriate functional committee for the library board, in my experience.
And you could do that with the chairman, at a regular meeting, could set up an at-hat committee to do the bylaws. It's not unusual at all with this many new members to review bylaws. That's standard practice, and it's a good thing to do. So, I was really uncomfortable with having, to me, if you're going to have a executive committee, the chair of the board should be the chair of the executive committee. You should not have two chairs in one committee. That leads to chaos.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
I would just reiterate that the work of the executive committee is the exact same work of the board, and I don't, I mean, I think as we hash out committees, bylaws, et cetera, that we need the input, as we would get, but I just think that it makes more sense. I keep going back to a workshop where everybody, everybody works on it together, we hash it out, we get it done. Because I think it's vital to have everybody's input as we are crafting whatever we're working on. So I, once again, if there's an executive committee responsibility that differs from that, then maybe there's a reason for it. I'm just not a fan of a committee for this and a committee for that, because I think it wastes a lot of time. I just say, we get together, we get the work done, and then, you know, everybody goes home. So rather than schlepping out for another committee meeting and this and that, and having to report what we've already done, and it's just double work, and, you know, we're all here, we're all, we all have the responsibility to figure this out, and I think that we all do it together as a workshop.
Ron, can I make a comment? One thing the executive committee also did, and this was Barbara made up the schedule for us for staff development topics out of the library trustee handbook, and that seems to have dropped by the wayside, as some things seem to happen with the executive committee. And then there was also, she wanted to keep us on schedule with self-evaluations. So have she contacted, talked to our new staff about-
That I can't answer.
Doing your self-evaluation out of your board book?
Not me, I can't speak for everybody else.
Or being on the schedule? Patricia's the only one that stood the trustee responsibilities in board, or you did. It was different. She redid this in the title of your book. You did the difference between a government and a governing board and a, it's not on there.
There's been a couple of lights, yeah.
So, anyway, that's a good point, yep.
Good point. I would, I would just say, in the interest of time, I think we've covered the majority of the things. We could continue to beat this around many different ways, but I would suggest everyone go through this, send edits to Barbara, or comments, so that she can circulate it back out by our next meeting, so then we can be prepared to make a vote.
Barbara Young.
Yes, ma'am. Barbara Young, not Barbara Sloan. Barbara Young. Everybody in Gooseville must be named Barbara's.
If I may, I think you need a very good final draft of this to be presented to everyone. That's what you need to have, not a rough draft to be voting on changes at the next meeting. And when you have a more clear draft of what you desire to do, we really do need to consult with Mr. Walter on it, to be sure that-
Oh, absolutely.
It is as good of a document as it can be.
Yes, ma'am.
I would like to suggest that between now and next meeting, that we have a work session, a bylaws work session, to facilitate exactly the tough, you know, I, once again, totally agree with Tom, that we have to have a very concise draft of what we are. So we know exactly what we're voting on. So that would have to occur in the next two weeks.
What is the next meeting? Is it the 25th or the 18th?
The 25th.
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 25th. So we would have to-
Any issue, do you see any issue with us having a work session?
No, I don't think that there is an issue. And I, I would probably suggest, as a first go-around, if you're available to do it, around October 4th, because that would give you more time if you need it.
Next week.
Before the October meeting, rather than choosing the, you know, like, the 11th and then running out of time if you're trying to get this a little tidier for the October meeting.
October 4th?
That's next Wednesday.
Yeah, I'm going to be out of town.
Are you out of town that week? Well-
Leaving on the 4th.
Well, how about if you allow me to work with the board to identify a date? Are we, does that make sense?
Yeah, sooner than later.
Yeah, okay.
Everybody good with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds good, thank you.
Mrs. Shepley, I would have to leave by 11:30.
On the 4th.
I'm gone on the 4th.
My wife has a follow-up on her eye surgery that day, and I cannot miss that.
Probably going to struggle to get everybody there on short notice regardless, so I think you can probably find what works for the most, what works for the most amount of people.
Yeah, yeah. And I cannot, and I cannot do the 11th either.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, we're going to move on from the bylaws.
Can I ask?
Yes, sir.
I have one last question. The only thing I wrote, "No," by the, "General duties of the library director, provide the board with monthly list of all the books that have been purchased."
I'll page you on.
Why are we asking for that?
For information only.
Just for information only?
For information only.
We won't take any action on it?
Doesn't say that.
I'm sorry?
Doesn't say that, no, just-
I know it said, "Doesn't say that," but what is, why do we want the, why do we want a list of the books that we purchased if it's, we've never had it before? It's staff, it's the staff responsibility.
I think it's a fair question. I think the library board should be informed of all aspects of the library. It's just more information, more transparency, that's it. Is that listed on the website? All the books being purchased? I don't know, is it?
New purchases.
New purchases? Yeah, I mean, that kind of thing is just, I think it's just great, more information is better.
I can't hear you.
It's on the website, our new purchases.
All right, next is the fiscal year 2025 budget, Tom.
Do you want me to go to the other side?
Yes, sir.
One is the green, three-page document, which is in the same format that the approved FY24 budget was. Looking at the first page, we're moving along to get to FY25 budget, and I'm not going to go with the specific numbers there. I have a second one that I think will probably also help you with this. Basically, this budget does not contain a lot of changes. We always are working with- We always are working with Hanover County budget. Much of, much of what the library board ends up doing is based on 70% of the funding that comes from Hanover. I would say it's very early in the county's preparation for an FY25 budget. So the, the crystal ball is, is not terribly clear at this point. But in conjunction with, with the county budget folks, this budget has a 5% merit increase built into it. We, previously, there had been discussion for the Montpelier rent that we currently pay to become staffing and I don't know for sure that that's going to happen either, but that is built into this proposed budget. It includes an 8% increase for health insurance, which is basically the multi-year plan that the county has. The, looking in the fifth line down, other payroll-related increases, you can see that we have actually made a reduction there as we've been able to fine tune some of our payroll that we're in. And then in contractual services, the next, next one down the white sheet, we've got some contractual increases that we need to provide for, that's $14,500. See, rent matching Montpelier payroll change. And then we have also reduced operational costs 40% in the shared service area, cause this budget is for FY25 and based on the idea that King and Queen will not be part of the region in either of their funding.
Did you say 40%? Sorry.
Uh, 40,000, I believe.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Tell them on rent, how's rent? What's, rent's going down?
Um, rent will go down. The current Montpelier library and the Montpelier Center for Arts and Education, we pay rent for the library space there. And what, like what happened with Atlee is the library was kept funding for the rent and applied it to staffing in the, in the new facility, which both the facilities are larger than the previous ones. Again, that's certainly a request and intention, we'll see if that happens. But overall, that idea that on July 1 of 2024, King and Queen funding is not being provided here. The revenue changes in the middle section, it, well, it comes out about $50,000 increase in Goochland, $205,000 in Hanover, $51,000 in King William. In King and Queen, it's based on the budget reduction, because right now, all they have budget is $139,894, but it's really whatever amount they're giving us this year to operate, provide library service, that's what that number is. And it will be, again, zero if they move to operate independently in FY25. State aid is showing a small reduction. One of the challenges is that we're talking about July 1st, 2024. There's a lot of time still between now and then, there will, you'll have to have an amended budget. State aid in the last couple of months has, has gone down and went back up after the legislature answered their questions about the budget, much from their skinny budget to their full budget. So we're, we're targeting to do about $5,000, $6,000 reduction, about $20,000 in other income and you see that we're not taking as much money from the reserve fund. And the green, multi-page document reflects those changes for revenue and expenses. First page. The second page has our anticipated branch expenses. And the third page shows the anticipated shared service expenses.
Tom, could you walk us through the timeline for those of us who are new? So this is a draft, when do you need to have approval? When do the counties start looking at their budgets for the next year?
So it has already started. Hanover County had October 13, I believe, for their departments to get budget requests in. They know that we are always an outlier for their process. Ideally, we would have a budget approved, budget request approved by you, the library board, at this meeting, at the latest, at the October meeting. Hanover will need it, Goochland will need it after that. I've already gotten a questionnaire from King William. King William just sort of a question mark. They're normally the last ones and they normally, they normally send it out to be completed immediately before the holidays at the end of the year and have it due back immediately following the holidays, beginning of the year, so.
Any other questions for Tom?
Chair, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
This is just, I just simply don't know the answer to this question. Why under the utilities, my Goochland has $0.00?
Because the county and the town of West Point pay those for us.
They pay the, okay. So, and that's, I guess, probably around $10,000? Who knows? Okay, I was just curious why I have $0.00? Thank you.
That's, that is something that as we get into the audit, that's what they call county government services, they get credit for what they're providing in support of the library within the audit, cause the audit is intended to reflect what it costs to provide the service.
Gotcha, thank you.
Anything else for Tom on the budget? Thank you, Tom. Okay, next thing on our agenda, it says electronic meetings, I guess ultimately should, should save remote participation. We have a draft of a remote participation policy. I will note that for Hanover, I can't speak for the other counties, Hanover County does have a similar policy, Mr. Walter, correct me if I'm wrong, allowing board of supervisors and school board members to participate from meetings remotely. Am I correct in saying that?
Yes.
Okay, and I, so I think it's for this board, being a completely voluntary position, you know, those folks are elected and also paid to do those jobs. If they have the ability to do so, I think certainly a board made of volunteers should have that ability. I think we all do the very best we can to be here in person, but we do have things come up like a medical situation or business travel that was kind of, you know, not preventable. So I think that, that's why we have this policy and I think because it's, you know, done at other levels of, of board governance, I think is, is something we ought to look at. It lays out, is this, Mr. Walter, correct me, is this draft policy the exact one that, or very close to what the Hanover Board of Supervisors uses? I don't know if you've had much time to look at it, so forgive me for putting you on the spot.
Functionally, it, it's similar. Most of the boards and commissions and committees of Hanover that have these included in their bylaws or their rules. So the format is a little different. This is based upon the more, the newer language in state code and I, I don't see anything in here that, that's problematic. There is just one issue that I think, I guess was included in here that I think whether the board here today adopts this or refers it to the work session for next week, if it's gonna be included in the bylaws, is there is a provision for a distant meeting location. I just did a super quick GPS search and I think that someone could actually be appointed who is more than 60 miles away from another meeting. There's no limitation on that, so it is possible that someone in far western Goochland or far eastern King William might be able to use this to not attend a number of meetings, depending upon how many or how much. So that's just a, a point of consideration, because that, this is the first policy I've seen that has that, because I've only dealt with Hanover ones and you can't go 60 miles from your principal residence within the county. So that is, that is the only comment, otherwise I think this policy could be adopted and would be in conformity with provisions that go for checking.
Any discussion, questions for Mr. Walter, Mr. Shepley about the draft policy? We're not gonna take any action today. Nothing? All right. The last thing on new business is the reserve fund. I do not know who put this on the agenda. Did you add, Barb, did you add this?
Yeah, just, that was from the last meeting, it was just a whole over from the last meeting. Right. And just the discussion about the reserve fund and balance in the reserve fund, how money gets into it and what it's used for. And just, once again, just so everybody understands, I, I just, no, I don't know.
This, this document is a, is a multi-year view of the reserve fund. As part of the board's oversight of the finances, at least annually, they need to designate how the reserve fund is gonna be used. The reserve fund is made up of contributions in revenue to the library over time that have not been spent and they could come from, you know, a dollar from Goochland County or one of the other localities and they can come from a dollar that someone paid for photocopying and they can come from a, a gift to the library. So what we're, what we're doing here is trying to take that multi-year perspective to make sure that, you know, what needs that we know are coming up are being taken care of and also that we're able to go ahead and basically have a document to keep track of what funds are available and what their intended use is for them. So if you read across to the FY24 column, since that's the year that we're in, you will see that in the non-spendable category, we do not have any dollars. We don't have any in restricted. We have some monies in committed. We have $90,000 committed towards the Atlee branch, that money was a donation from the Atlee friends. We have $260,000 committed to the Ashland branch. $250,000 of that was given to us in someone's will in FY23, a very generous gift. The other $10,000 is also a donation. West Point is listed at $150,000 for FY24, based on the board's decision last year. And we've committed $96,600 in rent for the admin facility. And that's the end of the committed section. Might be useful for me to let you know that these terms, restricted, committed, assigned, unassigned, those come from the Government Accounting Standards Board. I can only apologize if you find them confusing. They, they basically are intended to show the various levels with which the board intends for something to happen. So committed is a high level of contention, assigned is slightly less. In the assigned category, we have a future facility for the administrative offices. We don't have any dollars currently in future branch projects. We do have money in future admin center rent, because the facility that we're currently in is a rental facility. And that was kind of the start of doing this on a multi-year basis, because we were renovating and then leasing the admin offices for a five-year lease. And then last in the assigned part, unanticipated expenses. You may have a vehicle that, you know, an engine blows up and needs replacing, et cetera. We cannot have any funds in the unassigned category. And as you see on the far left, the, it's a total of 100%, but in FY24, we're showing $3.1 million basically in reserve. Do you have questions about that?
Is there, is there a, a small handout that you could have with some description of what each one of those categories does allow? I mean, you mentioned blowing up a car engine or something like that, but is there a paragraph that stipulates those kinds of expenses that are more clearly, that you can use that for?
There is, there isn't really an existing document for that, but we could put something together for you.
Are you specifically talking about a specific section or?
It says unanticipated expenses, I'm not quite sure what that means. Talk about a car, what else would you consider, just from your own being there for so long, would you use something like that for?
I think the, the real purpose of that is to provide for continuing the operations of the library in the event that the board did not have the contributions from the localities coming in. I, in my work experience, I have experienced when the library has had significant shortfalls in income due to economics.
Right.
And so having, having that fund has been something that, you know, you would have available to draw on for a short period of time.
Saving for salaries?
So, sorry.
Saving for salaries? Saving for salaries.
Yeah, we, you could keep the lights on and maintain operations for a short period of time.
I, I have a question. The, as, the future administration capital project. When was that? When was it decided? And I just simply don't know, was that decided to hold this amount of money for a project that I've never heard about? It's a, so building the PRL office basically is what that's for?
It, it is for office space, that is correct, yeah.
Okay, and that is, was that a board decision years ago or?
It absolutely was a board decision.
Yes.
I would say that it was a discussion that the board had over multiple years. Again, kind of related to the previous Atlee library, which was a rental facility in a strip mall. The regional operation had approximately 3,000 square feet in the rear of that facility for, which. for, which it was used for collections and our mobile services department. When the lease ended for that facility, um, we needed someplace for those people to work. We discussed it, I discussed it with the library board, and they approved the idea of having all of our administrative offices together rather than spread out in sort of empty corners of various branch libraries. It just wasn't that efficient for us to work together. And so, um, based on timing and everything for that, and the number of other projects that were going on, the decision was to, um, go ahead and identify the current office location. It was renovated in a five-year lease there, with the intention that we would not lease there and definitely that during this five-year period, we would identify either property to purchase that we could become the library offices, or perhaps there being new construction.
Okay, so that's just a, a future board capital decision?
It, it is, but I would also recommend that, um, the clock is ticking relatively quickly.
You actually show, you actually show it there, because between the budget that we're considering now versus the one the following year, you're adding $700,000 to that fund?
Um, if, if we're moving forward with, you know, locating property and designing a facility and a construction timeline, it is time to, it is time to continue to move forward down that path.
Yeah, I think that's a long, a long discussion, because that's a, that's a lot of money. Property and design and build, that's a lot of money, so. And quick, just curious. Would money be available from the admin project to go to a branch, should a branch need a capital expenditure? They were in dire need of, of capital expenditure. Would that come out of the admin, uh, project, or would that be taken out of unanticipated expenses? Let's say, because if, if the branch had a capital project, does that get any, would that be in precedence?
I think that you would need to have more information about the branch capital project to understand what's going on with it, to make a better decision with that.
In other words, there's no hierarchy of the division of assigned funds?
There is not.
Okay.
I, you know, I would, I would probably caution you to try to keep the money for the building until such time that you actually have the solution in hand, just given the cost of real estate, you know, what, what's happened with our assessments at home in the past couple of years. Because you, you are going to need to be able to provide a space for offices for people to work. That is, um, it's, it's, it's just not part of what we have in our infrastructure today to make use of, so.
Could you clarify what is the lease end date for the present headquarters?
I believe that, um, I think that it is going to end in December, January, uh, January 26th. I can confirm that. When we moved, when we moved, um, the timeline was such that, um, we were in some temporary offices while construction finished. And so the five-year period didn't start till it occupied, and I believe that was in January. But was that in '22? Like COVID years. I'd prefer to double check that. Thank you. But, but that is what we're trying to do within the designation of the, of the reserve fund. The, the money, it is referred to as the reserve fund, and it is, it is not like you have a passport to a savings account. It's not, it's not separate funding per se. All of the library's funds are in with the county's funds. The county is, takes care of investing them that are available. We, on a day-to-day basis, of course, it's like your checking account, you know, bills are paid. The day that, uh, King and Queen pays us the quarterly payment, you know, it'll increase instead of decrease. You know, go back to, you know, whatever checks are cleared as they go. Designated as a reserve fund is really more of a intellectual kind of process based on accounting rules, so. And it's something that, it really is time for you to re-designate these of the reserve fund in terms of our preparation of the audit for the FY2023 fiscal year.
Um, are there any plans, um, for that money that's been specifically committed to Atlee and Ashland?
Um, I would say not specific. Um, the, um, probably the most specific would have to do with $10,000 worth of the Ashland, um, money. We were not anticipating receiving the bequest of $250,000 towards the Ashland branch last year, but the Ashland branch is one of the highest performing in terms of a service outlet that we have, and it's also got the oldest infrastructure. So the timing for us is, you know, very good. The building, the building is updated. Um, it definitely needs, you know, at a minimum, painting carpet. Staff have developed a very good plan to do some light renovations inside to add some meeting spaces, collaborative rooms, um, to what we have. And we've got some ideas about just trying to rearrange things and make, make spaces work better for us. So I think we have a very good idea to propose to the library board, um, in terms of using those funds. The money at Atlee, um, it really is kind of focused and tended, I think, to go towards helping with the garden space that is kind of at the north end of the building. When the Atlee project went to bid, um, the bids came in basically 20% higher than the architect's, um, cost estimator had predicted. And I will say that it took a lot of work with caring staff, with the, um, best contractors bid, um, and library staff to value engineer the project. And value engineering the project means that you're earning the project down to meet the funding available. But the plans for the outside space were greatly diminished. That was supposed to be an outside effort later, and it is not. And so that is, you know, that is a very targeted space. One of the things, you're building a $10, you know, project, if you take out, you know, $100,000 for the sake of argument in what you're doing to the building, because you say, I don't have $100,000 now. I'll come back and do it in a couple of years? Well, it's not as inexpensive to do it, because you're bringing everybody back on site another time. You know, you didn't do the concrete when the concrete was being done, et cetera. You have inflation. So, um, that probably will not do a ton of things, but I think that the money still needs to be put to that purpose. I would read my recommendation to you. And as a specific, I don't really have a specific plan for that. We had gotten some ideas from the architects at one point in time. They didn't, they were kind of underwhelming, um, based on the smaller amount of money to be in ours. So, if you're going to do a project, you know, you kind of want to have more than a pot of flowers at the end of the day. So that's what we spent that night.
Anything else? Uh, the last thing, Tom, is your report. If you have anything else to report.
I will just pass it out and summarize while I am talking. I've added some reports to those, um, sort of based on discussions where Sheamuck and Mr. Johnson in the orientation part of the process that we did one-on-one. So there is a report there about, um, breaking down the circulation of the library's collection by the various collections that are in our branches. And there is a table on the right-hand side. There seemed to be some interest in breaking down, um, circulation between physical and remote. So, I'd say it's approximately two-thirds, I think, when two-thirds is physical. About a third of it is, is remote. Um, and I also provided you with the July and August, um, dashboards and statistics report for the library. I can leave any questions via email. Time call if you'd like.
Did you get one?
Yeah.
There's two months. It's July and August.
Ah, thank you. Any questions for Tom?
Only if we're going to meet the,
This is great, thank you.
If we're going to meet the fourth, um, please let's meet in the morning. I can be here.
I don't think the fourth works.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, with that, we are going to adjourn, adjourn the meeting. Thank you all for coming. And, uh, safe travels going back to wherever you're headed.